Hello, welcome all to the District One Candidates Forum, co-sponsored by the Tower District Preservation Association, TDPA, and CMAC, the Community Media Access Collaborative. I'm Alicia Rodriguez, and this is Joe Catania. And we're board members of the TDPA, and we'll be moderating today's event. We would like to give a special thank you to CMAC for their cosponsorship of the production of the broadcast.
The Tower District Preservation Association was established in the early 1990s in response to the encroachment of blight and potential loss of historic character of the area. Early TDPA functions included community art events such as the Tower Art Festival, community workshops, liaisonship with nonprofit organizations, fundraising for infrastructure improvements, and communication with the city of Fresno to enhance the quality of life for our unique community. TDPA has also been instrumental in the facilitation of the Tower District specific plan in 1991. After a hiatus, the TDPA has recently been reestablished to fortify and perpetuate these very types of actions and assist the community at large in involvement in caring for their home.
Part of this involvement includes awareness of governmental workings and advocating for our quality of life through community voice. Today, we have four candidates running for District One who have graciously agreed to participate in our forum, and we do thank them for their presence. We have prepared several questions regarding issues facing the area, and each candidate will have a timed opportunity to respond. Candidates have been given questions and rules of engagement and are expected to abide by them. This forum is not a debate; therefore, candidates are disallowed from discussing opposing candidates or responding to their views. Moderators will alert candidates when they have 30 seconds left for their allotted response. TDPA and CMAC are not endorsing any particular candidate. This is intended to be an informational insight into where candidates stand on issues of interest, so the community may be better equipped to make informed decisions in this election.
The four candidates with us today are Kerry Catalano, Annalisa Perea, Mike Briggs, and Jeremy Price. Let's begin with their opening statements. And we will start with Annalisa Perea.
Great, thank you so much, Joe and Alicia, for inviting me today. So I'm Annalisa Perea. I am a longtime Tower District resident, a longtime member of the Tower District Design Review Committee. By professional trade, I'm a city planner. So every day, I work on issues like affordable housing, economic development, homelessness, transportation projects. In 2018, I was elected to the State Center Community College District Board. So through that capacity, I get to work on how to make college more affordable, how to make community college more accessible. And right now, we're working to bring more student housing for our local community college students. During the pandemic, I partnered with a lot of our businesses to bring parklets to the Tower District. So when it was a matter of life or death for some businesses, we gave them that second chance to make sure that they could continue to be prosperous during the middle of a global pandemic. I've stood with the Tower community on a number of controversial issues over the last couple of years, which I look forward to talking more about a little bit later, and looking forward to serving as your next council member for Fresno City Council District One. I do have the support of the Fresno firefighters, the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, and a number of local community leaders here within the Tower District specific plan area. So again, looking forward to being your next council member, and thank you both very much for the opportunity to be here today.
And now we'll hear an opening statement from Mike Briggs.
The light coming on, there it is. We're here to talk about preservation and planning for the Tower District. The key to the longevity of the district is economic activity. Lack there will result in the death of this cultural center of Fresno. The district relies on not just the Tower residents supporting the businesses, but also need patrons from North Fresno all over the valley to come to the Tower District and leave behind their cash at our businesses and restaurants. While we, the locals, have become accustomed to stepping over people camped out on the sidewalks and securing our vehicles in a safe place at night, visitors will not be as accommodating. People who make wise choices of locking up their cars and Ubering home at night after a night of revelry return in the morning and find their windows smashed or their catalytic converter stolen. They're not likely to return. If we don't clean up the streets, clean up the crime, and dispatch the homeless out of our neighborhoods, the Tower District will die. When I first ran for and was elected to the council, I ran on a pro-business, anti-crime platform, and I kept my word. First thing we did was to cut all development fees in half in the Tower District. We used inner-city funds and partnered with businesses to light up the sidewalks. The city paid for and installed the lights, and the businesses paid for the electricity. Then, we instituted the first-ever police foot and bike patrols in the Tower. We opened over 50 new businesses in our safer, brighter, cleaner neighborhood. I was a city councilman when the city budget was half a billion dollars. Then I went to serve in the state legislature where the budget was $100 billion. Times have changed. I know how to read budgets. I know how to set priorities. Not all priorities are created equal. My priority will be a safer, cleaner, and more business-friendly neighborhood. I want to turn back the clock on the Tower District to a time when we walked the streets, visited our neighbors, and congregated in the mornings at the coffee shop. But I will represent all of Council District One, up to Shaw Avenue, out west of Highway 99. In my past tenure on the council, we increased the size of the police department to two cops per thousand citizens. That's a national standard. Right now, we standard about 1.4 cops per thousand. Who set those priorities? Also, we bought the first Fresno Police helicopter. I know sometimes it's irritating, the sound of the helicopter, but besides helping to catch more bad guys, the helicopter has virtually eliminated high-speed chases through our city streets. When I was on the council, we put public safety and business first. When I return to the council, we'll do it again.
Now Kerry Catalano will present his opening statement.
Thank you. I want to start off by thanking the Tower District Preservation Association and CMAC for hosting this event. I want to tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running for Fresno City Council District One. What I think is important to say to you today is while we're talking about the Tower District specific plan and the preservation of the Tower District, it's critically important for all people in District One to know that I care about each and every one of you, regardless of your location and proximity to the Tower District proper area. Residents west of 99 need to know that their council member will fight as aggressively as possible to save their neighborhoods, as I will work just as hard to protect the values of the Tower District. A little bit about myself. I've lived in the Fresno area my entire life. My mother was a waitress. My father was in construction. Both of them suffered from alcoholic abuse. What was very unique about my experience is while my parents were not home in the evenings, oftentimes on the weekends, I was surrounded by people that believed in opportunities and the opportunities to have everything I could possibly need in my life to succeed. I'm running for city council because so many people in my life gave me the opportunity to dream the impossible dream of going to college, the first one in my family, to owning a business, to having the investments I needed to work towards helping nonprofits to build affordable housing, to make sure that people had decent food and shelter, to working on homelessness, as I do as a chair of Fresno Housing Authority. My job as your council member is to be the liaison for you at City Hall, to ensure that barriers are busted, to ensure that all people have equitable access to city resources. The fact is, City Hall has not been working for you. The district is not safer than it was four or eight years ago. The district is not cleaner than it was four or eight years ago. Crime is out of control. Residents do not feel heard. And I ran in 2014. While I lost, I ran to be your voice of reason. And I'm running again today to show you that you all matter equally. The Tower District is a place that I grew up in. Went to the Tower Theater, saw movies. In college, ate at Livingston's, walked the streets in the evening, felt safe and secure. It was a clean commerce district because we had zoomed-in focus. The challenge is, the city council and the administration did not fully fund and invest in the plan to implement. There was a vision, but no money to back it. There was a vision, but nobody to push it. It was all just talk. At the end of the day, I'm not about talk. I'm about action. I will fully fund the implementation plan. I will fully support the update. Having a plan that sits on a shelf does not mean anything to anybody. I am supported by the Fresno Police Officers Association, Mike Reynolds, who led the charge to make the Tower District as safe as alongside by you, and so many other business leaders that feel that I am the best choice for this race. Thank you.
Now Jeremy Price will present his opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you for having me with this. Again, my name is Jeremy Price. I'm born and raised in Fresno. I grew up in the area by McLean High School, where I graduated from. I went on and went to Fresno City College, where I played baseball there. And if it wasn't for baseball, I would not have been the first one in my family to graduate from college. When I was young, I suffered a tragic death in my family, where my father, he was actually brutally murdered while he was at work by one of his employees. And I was forced to be, you know, a child of a single mother who raised two boys on her own and was able to get through that with the help of her and with the help of other people in this great city. After college, I was a high school teacher for six years. And after that, I went to work with the Fresno Police Department for 15. While I was there, I did several assignments. I was patrol officer. I was a tactical officer, and I was a student resource officer. That career ran its course for me. Five years ago, I decided to step away from the department and get into business for myself. And now I currently have my own insurance business. I'm not a politician. I am not a brush speaker. I am not a polished person that should be in front of the camera, by no means. However, I am just a regular guy who wants to make a difference, who does really not plan on losing. I've never lost in my whole life, even though I might fail. It's not a loss. I want to make this city better again. I want to keep this city safe for all of our family members, for my children, who can go out to a bowling alley and not be afraid to be shot at. My first house I purchased was in the Tower District. I am now in the Fresno High District, and I've been in the district for over 22 years. My wife and I spent a lot of time in the Tower District with our kids, eating breakfast, going to shows, doing the good company players. My wife and I love going to Goldsteins and hanging out and having a drink. This Tower District is unique. Every city, big city, has a Tower District. It needs to be kept the way it is. However, like Kerry said, everyone in our district needs to be taken care of. People west of 99, people up to Shaw, people in the middle and everywhere and every part of it. I probably shouldn't win, but I need to win. I am you. I'm the guy sitting there going, "I should do that one day." And I finally did. And if I do, I'm going to shake things up. There's no doubt in my mind that when I get there and I start saying no, bringing integrity back to that council, which I'm sure we all intend on bringing back, and not put a stain on this city. Bringing it back, making it safe, making it fun, and making economical choices that will make it all better for everybody.
Thank you. We'll get started with the questions now. You will have two minutes to respond to each question. First question is, "The Tower District specific plan was adopted by the city council in April of 1991 to help preserve the character of the plan area and to guide its future growth and development. In your opinion, what are some of the most critical elements of the specific plan, and how would you support the plan if you are elected to the city council?" And we will begin with Mike Briggs.
Well, I have what I like to call bona fides. I have experience of doing things. I said I'd do things, and I did do them. I was on the council and got to preside over the Tower District specific plan, support it, fight for it, make sure that it had the integrity it needed and deserved. Most critical part of the plan is zoning. Zoning is the city's promise to the, sort of like the contract with the citizens. This is our promise and our contract with you on what can be located where. Make sure your house isn't going to be located next to a rendering plant or your house isn't going to be next to an industrial zone or something like that. Not only is zoning our promise to the citizens of Fresno, it's actually a law. It's a zoning law. The Tower District specific plan is a law. Anybody buying property, buying a house, should be able to go to the City Hall and say, "I want to see the plan," or do it the new way, go on the internet and look at the plan and see what's going to be around your house. If there's a vacant lot or an empty building, you can find out what the zoning is. And I think that's a critical part of the plan. It guarantees that the Tower stays the Tower through zoning.
Thank you. Next, we will have the answer from Kerry Catalano.
There are several critical elements to the plan, but the first element I would like to talk about is implementation. This plan was adopted in 1991, and to this day, it has not seen its fullest potential. Why is that? Because City Hall continues not to fully fund our staff, its design review committee, or to give the staff the tools that it needs to be fully functional and to see its vision come to full fruition. So let's talk a little bit about some of the critical elements that are being ignored by City Hall and the two current council members and previous council members that have overseen this area. Number one, the historical characteristics of the Tower District and the surrounding neighborhoods. Critical element number two, implementing measures that would help and protect the design guidelines to see the design review committee is fully functional, staffed, and resourced. Nothing good gets done for free. It needs to be staffed with talented key personnel, and the council members need to appoint talented and committed individuals to serve on the appropriate committees to hold City Hall accountable. Number three, big thing, casting the vision to stay a diverse and inclusive neighborhood in terms of business and culture to ensure the walkability, feasibility, safety of our businesses and the residential corridor. Number four, investing in appropriate infrastructure. And I'm not just talking about streets and sidewalks, folks. It's easy to repair that. It's easy to do a lipstick project that might get a quick repave, a quick street cleaning, and new trees planting. But I'm talking about actually having small businesses have accessibility to capital to improve their storefronts and to help them feel like they're being heard. At the end of the day, we have a plan from 1991. We have an update that is taking place. And without it being fully staffed, the current conditions will continue. As your next council member, I will fight for the adequate resources, and I have the experience to deliver on that.
Thank you. Next, we'll have an answer from Jeremy Price.
So back in '91, the city did not have any of the problems it currently has today. That's one thing that is, needs to be predominant. And it's good that it's going through a review process. But one thing I took up from the plan was preservation. Preservation of historical homes, preservation of historical landmarks. And then these homes and landmarks actually are part of our city, the part that we should learn from and keep there for our children and our grandchildren to learn from. Ironically, history is being erased in these days to get rid of the heartache and the aches and pains of the history that was not soft and fluffy or just popular. But the Tower District, homes and the buildings there often are neglected. They have a plan to where you can redesign your home or buy a home and give it a facelift, but you have to go by certain guidelines. I think that the business part of the Tower District has been ignored. Like Kerry said, the monies there are not there for them to beautify the facades of their businesses, to get more people in from the north end of town down there to spend their dollars. We need to really focus on getting people involved to know what they're doing. I think that everybody sitting at this table would agree that it's just been neglected over the past 20, 25 years, even after this plan was put in. Personally, I think the plan has only been implemented just to keep it the way it is and not to make it better. We need to move forward to make it better.
Thank you. Next, we'll have an answer from Annalisa Perea.
Thank you. So two of the most critical elements of the specific plan. One is the historical preservation chapter. This tells us exactly everything that we need to be preserving and how to preserve it. The second most important element of the specific plan is land use and zoning. It's no surprise to folks that we have seen time again and again what happens when we don't implement the zoning laws? What happens when we don't implement the specific plan laws? As a city planner, I work every day on implementation of specific plans. And so I guarantee you that as your next council member, I will see through that this plan doesn't continue to collect dust. For those of you who don't know, the city is about to issue a contract to an outside consultant firm who is going to be tasked with updating the specific plan. So my promise to you as the next council member is to make sure that we have the most robust public outreach process because this plan right here is your plan. And it's going to be crucial that this plan reflects your vision and your voice. Lastly, I will add that we haven't had an implementation committee in quite some time. So as a seven-year member of the Tower District Design Review Committee, we have had to step up to the plate and act as that liaison between the plan and projects that happen here in our district. And I am proud of the work that we have done to protect our homes and our businesses from outside investors who have tried to come in and deteriorate the historical elements of the architectural styles within the Tower District specific plan. I will continue to carry the water when it comes to historical preservation. And as the next council member, I will see through the update of the specific plan to make sure that the community outreach process is as robust as possible because your voice is the entire reason why we are updating this plan today. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your answers to that question.
Okay, now we'll move on to the second question. "The Tower District specific plan covers approximately three square miles and includes residential, retail, manufacturing, as well as a regional arts and entertainment district. In your opinion, what are the major challenges facing the community, and what possible solutions would you pursue to address those challenges?" And we will begin with Kerry Catalano.
Thank you. The biggest thing is that you should be able to live, work, and play in the vicinity that you live. Every day, people need access to quality groceries, dry cleaners, eateries, you name it, movie theaters. Residents of the Tower area should be able to live their life in their neighborhood. That's what makes this area so attractive to so many. It feels like a community. But it's missing pieces of the things that we need to keep the economic bleed from going north. So let's get back to some of the challenges and opportunities we spoke about earlier. The challenge and the opportunity is right here. We need to fully staff and resource the implementation of the specific plan. No doubt that we need to put our focus and attention on what we want the Tower District, not just to look like today, but what the neighborhood will look like tomorrow and for generations to come. That's why I moved into the Tower District, because I love the neighborhood, and we have an obligation to protect it for future generations. Number two, challenge and opportunities. We need to properly identify the areas of where it matters most to invest early and to use that investment as a catalyst throughout the specific plan area, not just in the Tower District proper, but in other key areas within the specific plan area. We need to be able to geo-target industries like groceries, dry cleaners, movie theaters, and other elements that people need in their daily lives. It matters most as we try to curb folks using their car and trying to keep residents and seniors to have the services that they need. Number three, we lack the proper incentives to lure businesses back to the Tower District. People want to know that the city of Fresno means business in actually investing in the area and not just providing lip service. And finally, code enforcement, compassion yet enforcement. You need to hold business owners accountable as well as people. But first, you need to meet them where they are to find out what the elements are that led to the violation to begin with. So as your next council member, we'll have lots of robust conversations, and I look forward to continuing that conversation with you.
Thank you. Jeremy Price?
You know, Kerry makes a lot of good points, and I don't want to piggyback on a lot of them. But I also think one other very important thing is we have to make this community safer. We need to be able to go out and make these trips to the store, not only in our vehicles, but walking, riding our bicycles, taking the public transportation. We need to be able to see people out and about and not be afraid if they're going to lose their purse or lose their groceries when they're walking back from the store. One of the big things he hit on was the lack of grocery stores in the area from Tower District and the Fresno High area. My family has to drive way too far to go to the grocery store to get a quality food for the week. And it just seems one big thing that's lacking in the area due to the lack of planning, due to the lack of caring, due to the lack of funding from our current city council. Unfortunately, I think the current city council does a lot for me and not a lot for we. But the bottom line is, people need to make sure that they're safe. When I was young, I used to lay in bed at night, and I used to listen to gunshots in my bed throughout the neighborhood. And unfortunately, I hear the same thing right now. I'm hearing gunshots throughout the neighborhoods when I lay in bed. I think that increased police enforcement will continue to cut down on all the activities being proactive rather than reactive. We've made the right step in getting the pay scale up to be competitive throughout the state. Now we need to help focus the police department in getting quality candidates into uniforms and into patrol cars in the streets to make them safer.
Thank you. Annalisa Perea?
Thank you. So I want to start first by talking about economic development. We need to do more to diversify the businesses within the Tower District. Don't get me wrong, I love our bars and lounges, but our families are asking for more businesses where they can bring their young families and kids to come for entertainment. And I'm not talking about just businesses along Olive Avenue, but we need to do more to invest in new businesses in Van Ness Village and in other parts of the specific plan, which includes the historical Fresno High community all the way in every corner of the district. And that does include Blackstone Avenue. I will be a staunch advocate to create numerous incentives to attract these new businesses, to invest more in young entrepreneurs here who are looking for a little bit of help to get their business up and started. The other big thing is business retention. We are still recovering from the pandemic, and it's going to be critical that we continue to do our part to make sure that we keep the existing businesses that we have here alive. And lastly, the other area of opportunity that I am going to do a better job focusing on when it comes to where my office is going to be investing resources is to step up and be a bigger partner when it comes to our art and cultural scene. I want to be an advocate and a supporter to continue to make community events like the Rogue Festival, like the Real Pride Film Festival, like Porch Fest. We need to do our part as a city to step up and to make those events successful. We can't always rely on the community partners and the nonprofits to do the work for us. The Tower District is the most vibrant and culturally colorful area in the entire Central Valley. And I promise that my office will do more to step up and to partner with these organizations and events to make sure that we continue to make the Tower District a fun and safe place for every member of the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Briggs?
Yeah, and the question says, "What are the major challenges facing the community?" It's one thing, it's crime. The crime in the Tower area. I'm going to give a specific answer for Tower, but this will go for all of District One, all the way up to Shaw, out west of 99. It's the crime. The crime is affecting how we live. Homelessness is rampant. We must fix this crime issue. We must fix the homeless issue. We must dispatch the homeless out of our neighborhoods. That's step one. Then businesses, not businesses a city pick or the city arranges. The free market will come into the Tower. They will open businesses, and they'll be successful. But the city has to do its job. The city doesn't create businesses. City does this police, fire, sewer, water, garbage. We're not doing our job. The city's not doing our job when you see homeless people camping on the streets of our neighborhoods, leaving human excrement on the sidewalks. I had people camping on my front porch multiple times. And I'm staying. This is my final home I'm going to buy. I'm going to stay here the rest of my life in the Tower District. I'm going to fight for what we need. And what we need is the crime issue taken care of. We need more police on the streets. We need to prioritize the city budget to put more police on the streets. And we need to give the police the support they need to safely respond to these calls. Right now, you have one poor police officer has to run to a hot call by themselves and at risk. We need to make sure the police officers have the backup, the support, the equipment to do their jobs. But more than anything, we need the numbers. When we clean up the crime, when we dispatch the homeless out of our neighborhoods, then business will come, and the Tower District will naturally fix itself.
Thank you.
On to question three. As you know, over the past two years, there has been a lot of controversy related to the use of the Tower Theater for religious purposes. What are your opinions on the possible purchase of the Tower Theater for religious assembly? And how would you address this controversy? And we'll begin with Jeremy Price.
Thank you for the interesting question. This is a topic that depends on who you ask in the district if it's big on their list or not. If you ask someone west of 99, they're not concerned. If you ask someone in the Tower District, it could be the first thing on their list. Quite frankly, the freedoms that we have in this country, in this state, in the city are fabulous, and I'm all about backing them. Private enterprise is something that makes a city thrive. I'm probably not going to have the popular answer on this, but I believe that the city overstepped in this situation. It's a privately owned building. The city has a plan to keep it the way it looks, to not change the looks. Being that it's religious or not, it's still going to bring in revenue. They're still going to pay tax dollars, and there's still going to be events that are going to be held in the theater. I believe the city overstepped in spending taxpayer dollars on this situation. They should have stepped back and let the people involved settle it in the normal way that business always gets settled, whether that's in a litigation process or it's in a broker process in brokering a building. But all in all, I think that sometimes when the city gets involved, it just becomes too much. It becomes too much control by the government, too much control by overreaching and overstepping. That's my opinion on that one.
Annalisa Perea?
Thank you. So let me start by saying that the Tower Theater owner has a right to sell his property. I think the issue and question at this point is zoning. So whether it's a church wanting to come in and rezone to public institution, whether it's an industrial business wanting to come in and rezone the Tower Theater to industrial, bottom line is, as your next council member, I will not support a rezone application that has any detrimental impacts to the historical preservation of the Tower Theater, that has any impacts to the economic vitality of our businesses. I will not support a rezone application that has any sort of level of harm to the people in the Tower District. There seems to be some negotiations going on between the city and the Tower Theater owners, which I support. If it gets to the point to where they do make a deal, then great, but if this is still in flux by the time I'm on the city council, I guarantee you that we will come to terms. There will be a deal made, and our community can rest easy at nighttime. This has caused a lot of harm to our community. I believe I am one of the only council member candidates, or maybe the only council member candidate, that has stood on the no rezone side corner with the community. And half the battle sometimes is showing up, and this community knows who has shown up for them and who will continue to fight for them on the Fresno City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Annalisa. Next, Mike Briggs?
When the controversy of the Adventist Church buying or taking over the Tower Theater first arose, I said, it's not going to be a problem because it's not zoned for a church. I don't vote to rezone. Zoning is our promise to the people on land use. People should be able to count on those zoning laws, and they're the laws. They're not easy to change. They would not be changed easily, but I will never vote to rezone the Tower Theater to anything. I'm not picking on a church. I mean, if they want it to be a daycare center or a senior center, any use, I will not vote to rezone the Tower Theater. That being said, I think that the owner of the Tower Theater has a right to sell it to anybody he wants. I don't think the city should interfere there. I know Adventist Church has been meeting there for a couple of years, and we didn't even know they were there. Most of us didn't even know they were there. But when you say we're going to take it over, we're going to convert the facility and the zoning to something else, I'm against that. I've stood with the protesters. I told the protesters, I don't think there's anything to protest about. I think the zoning issues will take care of all of the issues. I've not totally agreed with all the protesters and some of their tactics and some things that were said against churches. I don't like that. I am pro-church. I think it could help. I'm for more churches. I'm for more churches, just not there. I appreciate, I want to say this about the protesters and that activity happened every Sunday. I could hear them from my house. It was a scene, it was a very cool scene for the summer, everyone out there, and it was a lot of fun. A lot of people got to know a lot of other people. They really helped to raise the issue of what's going on over there, and I commend them for the efforts they put in for months and months and months. But I think it's going to resolve itself. No rezone.
Thank you. Next, Kerry Catalano.
Thank you. I'm going to be maybe a little bit more bold here and say this. In 2015, when I was on the, 2014, 2015, when we approved the new 2035 general plan, we made it very, very crystal clear what the zoning was for the Tower Theater. We made it very clear how the new general plan would support the strategic plan of the area. It was made very clear time and time again. I won on ABC 30 right away when this was discussed about a potential purchase. I made it very clear that I did not support it, that the general plan did not allow it. What I will also tell you, as a gay male who has been married for 22 years, who has visited the Tower Theater and have been a patron of the Tower District, a church is not the appropriate location for the Tower Theater that is to be all-inclusive of all people, regardless of where you are in your life. The Tower District is meet people where you are. Clarification for the record, if you believe that nobody at the city of Fresno did not know that the church was utilizing the Tower Theater, you are all being duped. The reality is both council members knew that the Adventist Church was using the Tower Theater well before 2019. The reality is the city of Fresno was derelict in their duties to hold them accountable, that it was an improper use, period. The reality is no council member was ever going to bring, nor was the Development Department going to bring a rezone application before the city council because it would have failed. The reality is, everybody turned a blind eye until the word protest happened. If I was elected in 2014, this never would have happened because we would have worked with earnest to negotiate the potential purchase with a private sector entity that believed in the art and the culture and the spirit of the Tower, not a church. It's not an appropriate use, and they never should have been allowed to use the theater to begin with. So at the end of the day, here's what I will tell you. I will not support a rezone, and I will not support the church purchasing the Tower Theater. Thank you.
Thank you for your answers to those questions.
And now for question four. It is public knowledge that the city council, the mayor, and city attorney have been in several closed-session meetings with attorneys and the owner of the Tower Theater. Would you support the purchase of the Tower Theater by the city of Fresno through either direct negotiation with the owners or, if necessary, through eminent domain? And we begin with Annalisa Perea.
Yeah, great question. Thank you very much. So as mentioned in the question, it sounds like there are some negotiations happening right now between the city of Fresno and the Tower Theater owners. I'm hopeful that they will come to a conclusion soon and that hopefully there is a sale, a transaction that does occur. Eminent domain is a very last, very last-minute type of solution. I hope you don't get to that point, but the community knows that when I am elected to the city council, I am willing to do whatever it takes to protect our businesses, to protect the people, and to protect the historical preservation of the Tower District. So yes, I do support the city stepping in. This is a historical preservation and economic development issue. The city has a right to do that. They have a right to step in, and they have a right to protect the general welfare of the people. Very simple answer for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Briggs?
Would I support the city of Fresno buying, taking, stealing, eminent domaining the Tower Theater? My answer is no, no, no. I would not support the city of Fresno owning that private property. The city of Fresno has not been that good at running theaters and convention centers and memorial auditorium theaters and stuff like that. The city has no business owning that theater. I would not support that. I was born just a mile to the west of the Tower Theater. My parents took me home from St. Agnes Hospital, a mile to the east of the Tower Theater. I lived in the shadow of the Tower Theater for so many years. I knew Dottie Abbott. She bought the theater because she loved the theater. It was never a money-making proposition for her. Her heart was the Tower Theater, and I remember her and I knew her very, very well. I just could not see the Tower Theater falling into the hands of the city of Fresno. I do not think that would be a good idea. I keep talking about my bona fides, things I say I believe. When you're running for office, you tell people what you believe. When I got in office, I did what I believe, and I proved that I do what I say. I said when I got in office, I will not vote for eminent domain, and I didn't vote for eminent domain. Sometimes it's okay if the city uses eminent domain to take some frontage or widen a road. That's perfectly legitimate use. The idea that they use eminent domain to take a private property, a private business, that happened when I was on the city council. They wanted to take the top businesses in Fresno, Producers Dairy, Zacky Farm, and they wanted me to vote for that, and I said, no, I won't vote for eminent domain when I get on the council. I won't vote for eminent domain to take the Tower Theater into city hands, and I won't vote for the city buying the Tower Theater either.
Thank you. Kerry Catalano?
Thank you. The absolutely not. The city of Fresno should not use eminent domain, nor should they purchase the Tower Theater. We've seen the track record of how the city treats its public facilities, and it's quite dismal. I do know, as a matter of fact, that there are many, many private investors that would love the opportunity to own that asset. It's a large asset. It's not just the building, it's the parking lot and the adjacent buildings. It's something that could be maintained by individuals that have the resources and the compassion to honor its rich legacy. I want to get to this, though. What is taking so long? The two current council members have not been transparent at all with what is going on with the negotiations. There has not been robust conversations with anybody outside a very small inner circle. The property owner in question has said it is no longer for sale. So why don't we know the current state of affairs? It is unfair and unjust to those that care so deeply about this issue that they are not kept up to speed. What is wrong with transparency? Why has our council members not said anything? What is critical for me to say to you is this. If it is not resolved by January, when I am sworn in, there will be a lot of questions I will be asking as to why. I do believe that individuals like to drag the narrative out for political gains, to win votes by people in positions of influence and authority. That is not how I operate as a business owner. I want transparency and honesty and real, meaningful solutions. Talk is cheap, folks. You should be asking yourself, why is City Hall dragging their feet? Why is City Hall not using its code enforcement abilities to properly enforce the current zoning requirements? Why are we being so passive in solving this problem today? At the end of the day, I will bring a private sector person to buy the Tower Theater if it is not already resolved by the time I am sworn in in January 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Price?
Thank you very much. So when you go last, there's not much to talk on, other than I got a question for all you to think about. What city property has a city run well? And that pause should be on your mind as well. We can't even keep a baseball team in a top-line stadium. Memorial Hall is being rundown and not rejuvenated. What are they going to do with the Tower Theater? You know, it's one of those things where, you know, they're having closed-door meetings. Why are these closed-door meetings? Piggybacking on what Kerry is bringing up, why not the transparency? What's with the secrets? Well, there's people now questioning all the secrets that have been going on downtown in City Hall. So we need to have somebody in there that makes it transparent, keep the Tower District community in the loop on what's going on with the purchase of the theater, or the non-purchase of the theater. The individual that owns the theater is a very good person who's been handed down the theater from generations, and this is all turning into a much bigger ordeal than it needs to be. I think one of the successful conclusions of this is bringing in private enterprise companies to purchase that and to accordingly take care of it. I think there needs to be some upgrades with that corner. It could be beautified to the point to where it can look like it was when it first was built. The nighttime attraction of that theater, it stands out on postcards, pictures of the city on the websites, and I just think that that is the best way to go for both parties.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to question five. Housing for homeless individuals and families, and it is an extremely serious issue nationwide. How would you network with government entities, nonprofits, and the private sector to address this very critical issue? And we'll begin with Mike Briggs.
Homeless issue. I don't want to kid around. The homeless need to be out of our neighborhood. I don't want to sound like I'm not empathetic. There's a couple, several classes of homeless. First is the mentally ill. We've got to have a place for the mentally ill to go, where they can be cared for, a nice place, a garden and Eden kind of place, where people can help them get taken care of, take their meds, whatever they need. We have a lady that stands out in front of the market. I call her an old lady. She's probably my age, actually. She holds a baby doll, and she's just out there making all kinds of noise and all kinds of smell. She does not belong on the streets of our neighborhood. There's got to be a nice place for her to go. Second, people who are having truly economic collapse, true economic disaster. I met a lady who got married in Texas. She was in love. She moves to California. Her husband's killed in a car crash. She has no family, no friends, no parents to go to, nowhere to turn. We need a safety net for some people. But the third class of homeless is this giant, giant numbers of people who are just taking what's called the Fresno Option. In Fresno, you have an option. You go to a shelter, you go to a pavarello house, or take the option, just go set up a tent anywhere in Fresno, because Fresno won't do much about it. First thing we need to do is remove that option. You don't get that option anymore. These aren't mentally ill. These aren't people who've had a financial catastrophe. These are people who've used up their mom's couch, their brother's couch, their cousin's couch, their friend's couch. They've gone from person to person. They're looking for the easy way out. Those people have to go. We've got to say, no, it's over. I think we need to find a place for everyone, everyone. If those people, the third category I talked about, if they want to camp out, we'll give them a campground out in the country somewhere, away from our homes, away from our neighborhoods, someplace with restrooms, and for goodness sakes, with showers. But our neighborhoods have to be off limits to the homeless.
Next, Kerry Catalano.
Thank you very much. This is America, and we are the richest country in the world. And the fact that we actually have people sleeping on our streets and our byways and our freeways and our canal banks is absolutely unacceptable. It's a humanitarian crisis that we are just now beginning to touch. The problem really started about 50 years ago when the Reagan administration made a decision to close down a proper institution that treated individuals with drug addiction and mental health. And that burden became the burden of the cities and the counties with no direct funding stream to resolve those problems. Did it mean we should ignore it? We did for decades, and it's now here coming to roost. Over the last 10 years, I've had the opportunity to work with several past mayors as a community volunteer, and now as my role is Chair of the Fresno Housing Authority, to really begin to think strategically about how we address these issues long term. We know that we have limited capacity for mental health and drug addiction, limited capacity for workforce housing, and limited housing for those that are just freshly graduating from college and no longer could afford the $2,000 a month rent. So what are we doing? Well, over the last year and a half, we have housed over 1,000 Fresnoans that were living on our canal banks, our streets, our freeways, and our byways. Why is that important? It's important to show you that we're making progress. We're not just talking about it, we're doing it. And we're doing it in partnership with nonprofits, the state of California, the county of Fresno, private entities, and any other individual that wants to work together. This is not going to get resolved overnight, folks, and it's true, we have all kinds of elements, but we need to deal with the population with compassion and to meet them where they are. Of the nearly 1,100 people that we've housed, 92% of them are receiving the appropriate treatment and care that they deserve. You're always going to have some folks that fall through the cracks because they're not ready, but we're never going to give up on them, and we're always going to continue to fight. At the end of the day, all of us are committed to addressing homelessness, but I'm the only candidate with some proven results to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Price?
Thank you very much. Yes, Kerry does have a great track record with the homeless population, and I applaud what he's done with so far. It's outstanding. Everyone has heard me talk about the homeless situation. It's, quite frankly, it's more of a transit situation where Mike was hitting on it a little bit. A homeless individual is the person that needs your bed for a while to get back on their feet, to get a job, to get a place to live. A transient person, in other words, is the person that's on Mike's front porch sleeping. It's the lady who continues to use methamphetamine, the man who continues to use crack cocaine, the individual who continues to drink himself into a coma every day. That's induced, it induces yourself right into becoming a transit. You lose all your money, you burn all your bridges. We need to give them something away from everybody to help them cure this problem that they have. And one is, they have to want the help. Two, they have to have the tools to be helped into sobriety. And three, they have to have the help to transition into normal living. The pavarello house has a great program for that. However, the pavarello house is way too close to temptation. Everyone around the pavarello house is transient in their south, who have drugs or rampant all through that area. We need to get a place in the county. We have plenty of land in the county of Fresno. We need to coordinate it off. We need to give them services there where they can get counseling and services and to get clean and sober and don't have the temptation coming to them to relapse. You know, any sort of temptation is really easy when it's under your nose. This is a big problem, as Kerry is saying. It's not going to be handled in four years, it's not going to be handled in five, but we need to take the steps to get there and to really put effort into it now that we don't have the places for them to go any longer from the situations that were made back in the 80s.
Annalisa Perea? Annalisa Perea, please.
Thank you. Just want to start by saying that police officers should not be responding to homeless-related calls. There are others much better equipped to handle those kinds of calls. Secondly, it's no doubt that we need more low-barrier transitional shelters. We have spent tens of millions of dollars addressing this issue, yet we are not seeing very tangible results. And that is very apparent when any one of us walk out our front door and we have needles or human feces in our front yards. That's not okay, and that's not fair for the businesses either. I think one thing that's really missing from this discussion is a bigger discussion on mental health. We can build all of the homeless shelters in the world, but if we are not properly addressing and investing in the wraparound services, then we're not doing our homeless community justice. So my commitment is to make an even bigger investment in drug treatment facilities, in mental health rehab, because we can't start addressing homeless issues until we start tackling the root cause of what creates people that are unhoused. As a community college trustee, we are doing our part to step up and to build more affordable housing for our students, many of which are homeless. As a member of the Tower District Design Review Committee, we have approved over 100 affordable housing units over the last several years. We are all doing our part to make housing more affordable, to make sure that we are treating our unhoused population humanely, and we can't do it alone. I'm going to continue to partner with our private sector, with the nonprofits, as the next council member, to make sure that we are seeing tangible progress when it comes to our unhoused community, because they deserve dignity, but they also deserve compassion and safe housing. Our businesses deserve for this issue to be addressed, and I believe I am the best-equipped person to do that as the next council member. Thank you.
And now our next question. Personal safety, theft, and property damage are serious concerns throughout the city. What would you do to ensure public safety in the Tower District and the areas defined by the specific plan while also ensuring respectful and equitable treatment of citizens? And we'll begin with Kerry Catalano.
Thank you very much. Number one issue at the door, I think, for all of us on this table, regardless of where you are and where you're walking in District One or throughout the city of Fresno. As a homeowner, as a husband, as an uncle, as a cousin, as a candidate and a business owner, it's very important to me that we ooze confidence that Fresno is a safe, clean place to do business, to live, to grow, and to thrive. I'm very proud of my support from the Fresno Police Officers Association, something that was completely unexpected, to be honest, because I did say we need to take a different approach in how we address public safety. Compassion with enforcement is essential to preserving equitably and fairness in how we enforce the law. Number one, individuals should be held accountable for their crimes. Absolutely. Number two, the judicial system needs to work quicker. We know it's underfunded. We need to advocate for additional funding so people know that if they do get arrested and they're going to be in jail, that they're going to get their due process in a way that's quicker than it is today. Number three, you're going to have a candidate and a council member and me that supports community-based policing. We need to have our units in patrol not responding to traffic accidents, not being at the embankment when we're cleaning them up. We need boots on the ground. We need our community to feel safe and secure and that the police department is going to respond to them in their greatest time of needs. Oftentimes, people say, my home was burglarized, my car was vandalized, I called dispatch, it took a bit to get somebody to respond to me, and then nobody ever showed up. As your liaison in the Fresno City Council, that's going to be my number one priority. Regardless of the crime, you have a right to respond, and the best way to do that is to have more boots on the ground and to support the implementation of a fully funded community-based policing program. So you know, when something does happen to you, an officer or a community service officer will respond. Foot patrol, bike, you name it, we need it all. And so, public safety is the number one issue, and I plan to fully fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Price.
Thank you. So regarding this, being in law enforcement, you know, I was on the bike patrol of the Tower District for a while. That was a very, very good thing for the Tower District as far as community-based policing. You could speak to everybody, they could see your face, know your name. And you pass out your business card and they got to know, they got to email you if they had a problem in their neighborhood, and you were there. You were a known person, you just weren't a number they called. One of the big things about the Tower District, it has a report writing station there. We need to implement one or two more in the neighborhood, and not only just for officers, but have one available for people to come to report their crimes in person. Rather than calling dispatch, who has a severe problem with understaffing as well, takes forever for non-emergency lines to get picked up. We all know that, I think if you've called the police department once or twice, you sometimes get a recording or it just rings and rings and rings. Not everyone is as fortunate enough to have the numbers of officers still that still come out and help when you call. The proactive policing is a big, big mechanism that prevents crime in this city. When I was on the proactive team for five years in the city, we would make arrests constantly every night. Now, one of the big problems stems from the state. Prop 47 really tight officers' hands with the lowering from methamphetamine and any sort of drug to a misdemeanor from a felony. I've spoken to the district attorney, and she's doing all she can with the laws that she has and with the abilities that she can to put these criminals away in jail and keeping them in jail. But we need to, for the Tower District, keep officers there on bicycles, reporting, writing the reports, have someone there to report the crimes to, get the community policing involved again, and have meetings in the local area, maybe included in the theater area as well.
Thank you. Annalisa Perea.
Yes, thank you. So I have a number of solutions when it comes to how to best address public safety in the Tower District. One, we are going to restore our bike officers. Two, we're going to increase the number of community service officers, because the number one issue that I've been hearing from you is you're sick and tired of your vehicle being broken into, you're tired of your catalytic converters being stolen, you're tired of your gasoline being stolen, you're tired of your packages on your porch being stolen. So that is really where I'm going to be investing more money when it comes to how to reallocate resources within the police department, is we need to do more to prioritize the calls that are so personal to you, which are the crimes that are happening on your very front door. We also need to increase traffic control officers. We have one of the most pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods in the city of Fresno, yet we are not doing enough to invest in pedestrian safety. We have speeders, chronic speeders on Waschan Avenue, McKinley, Clinton, and it is only, unfortunately, a matter of time before somebody gets hit. So instead of being reactive, let's be proactive and let's increase the number of traffic safety officers holding speeders accountable. Now, don't get me wrong, public safety is more than just police officers. Public safety is making sure that we have streetlights on at night that shine bright. Public safety is making sure that we fix our cracked sidewalks, again, investing in pedestrian safety so that our families can continue to walk all over the Tower District safely. We need to increase the number of dispatch officers or dispatch employees within our police department, because how many times have you had to call 911 and you were put on hold, and that is not okay. Lastly, this is a very important thing to address, but many of you have been victim to the Proud Boys in our community. And I might be the only one to talk about this, but I will continue to stand with my community, and I will not associate myself with any group or any organization that stands with the Proud Boys. I have stood with you on the corner when the Proud Boys were present, and I will continue to stand with my community on issues that matter the most to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Briggs.
And the question is, what would we do to increase personal and property protection, safety issues in the Design Review Committee, in the Tower District specific plan area? All of District One is the same. All the city has the same problem. We're all talking about different priorities here today, stacking up priorities, things we need to do in Fresno, but priorities are not side by side. Priorities stand up like this. What's going to be the top priority? What's the thing we're going to do first? Number one, we must increase the number of police officers. We've got to get police officers to the scene, got to get police officers to the crime. We've got to get there fast. People are always telling me, oh, the police, they're not doing anything. They don't even come. They just sit around the reporting site. That's not true. Our police officers are so busy that they go from hot call to hot call to hot call without a break in between. It's inhumane what we do to our police officers, and then people don't appreciate them, want to defund the police and stuff like that. We need to add police officers. We need to get the numbers up. They need to be good quality officers. I'm glad that we increased, did the pay increase, because now Fresno is going to be able to attract a higher quality police officer. The ones we have there are high quality now. We need them. Let me say this. We've changed how we live because the terrorist attacks on 9/11. We go in City Hall, you have to take off your shoes, your belt, federal buildings, the airport. Same thing's happening in the Tower District. Somebody's going around breaking car windows and breaking shop windows. So people, instead of making a good decision to not drive home after they've had some revelry and take an Uber home, they're driving home because they don't want to leave their car in the Tower District. The terrorists who are breaking the windows are making us change how we live. That's going to be one of the top priorities. We've got to find those kids or adults. We've got to arrest them. We've got to put them in jail, and if they're juveniles, we've got to hold the parents responsible. The broken windows, the broken shop windows, the broken car windows must stop.
Thank you.
Question seven. The specific plan update will include a detailed discussion on the ways the plan can lead to improved health, quality of life, and more equitable outcomes for all residents in the plan area. Industrial uses adjacent to residential areas are a concern. What are your thoughts on eliminating or mitigating negative effects of industrial uses on residential areas, and what, if any, plans do you have on working with the elected council persons from Districts Three and Seven to address these issues for the entire community in the specific plan area? We'll start with Jeremy Price.
Thank you. You know, I've spoke to some businesses in the industry areas and the Districts Three and Seven specifically, who have been threatened to be rezoned to commercial. And overall, Fresno needs industry. It brings in revenue, and there's always a place for it. It brings jobs, it brings availability for resources to come in this city. The city has created a master plan, but often in times in that master plan, it gets amended or it gets voted to rezone or something happens and changes. You know, to simplify it as being a parent, if you stick to your guns and stay with the rules, everything, no one ever wonders what direction you're going in. If we stick with the master plan and continue to go along with it, it simplifies everything. Everything goes back to, are you doing it for we? Are you doing it for me? What reason are you wanting to change or amend something? Commercial, residential, the industry, we can all benefit from one another. We just have to make sure we don't change things the way we planned it out to work. I'm not the guy that's versed on the master plan or the way the city works, but I can tell you this, if you bring some common sense back into the city council and just talk to people in the city and ask what they want, and listen to them, and try to make best what people in your district want, the city will be a happier place for everybody.
Thank you. Annalisa Perea.
Thank you. Yeah, so it is critical that we always look for opportunities to mitigate harm to the best extent possible. With that being said, with the update of this specific plan document, there are going to be numerous opportunities to do just that. I am going to work with the council members from District Three and District Seven to establish buffer zones. So these are areas in which we can do a better job separating industrial manufacturing uses next to residential uses. I'm also working on a project right now as a city planner where we're going to be bringing more electric vehicle trucks to the Central Valley. So this is going to change the way we move goods. I think there's opportunities to work with the Air Pollution Control District to issue grants to a lot of our industrial businesses to help them transition their truck fleets from diesel trucks to zero emission trucks. It is possible, because I'm working on this right now, and it's this city planning experience that we need on the city council. It's these bold, progressive, new ideas that we have never seen before. So I'm looking forward to being an active participant in the update to this specific plan, which is going to be a crucial component to how we do a better job separating land uses, separating more intense land uses that are next door to our residential homes. We have to do more to represent the people, and one way to do that is by strengthening this specific plan. Thank you.
Mike Briggs, please.
Certainly, we do not need new industrial uses, new industrial uses near our residential neighborhoods and near our Tower District area. We do have some industrial parks in Fresno, and that's where we need to focus the industrial activity. I know in West Fresno, there's a animal rendering plant next to a residential neighborhood, and it smells horrible out there. We have to just be careful. One good protection we have against that is the plan. The plan, the zone, is the law of the city. With good, strong plans, and I've always supported the plan, the Tower District specific plan, I've not only supported it, I've helped implement it, I've governed over it as a city council member, I've appointed members to the Design Review Committee and these other committees. The plan is the key to the security of the future of the Tower District to make sure we don't have unwanted and illegal uses in the Tower. Stick to the plan, build the plan, stick to the plan. Don't build industrial next to my house, please.
Thank you. Kerry Catalano, please.
Thank you very much. When we adopted the new 2035 general plan, when I was on the planning commission, we made it very, very clear where industrial and light industrial capacity could take place. It makes it very clear. I would not support, nor would I encourage, any developer or any out-of-town business or industrial business to ask us for a rezone. Protecting our residents is priority number one. If you look at southwest Fresno in District Three, that district was overindustrialized that led to some critical health issues for many of our residents. Of no surprise, there are several pieces of land that are being up for discussion to have them rezoned to heavier uses of industrial capacity that I would not support at all. Regarding Producer's Dairy that is in the specific plan, why is it it is still there in the middle of a residential neighborhood for decades? Why? People talk about caring about people's good health, but when it comes time to making the tough political choices that I have made, that have put me at odds with my own party to do the right thing, people just don't do it. But I do. I would move swiftly to work with the owners of Producer's Dairy to find an immediate piece of land, not adjacent to residential, but also to give them greater access to the freeway, releasing the residential neighborhood of the unnecessary pollution and noise that they live with every day. That's why you get elected, is to protect the residents and your community. So a plan is just a plan. What good is a plan if it is never implemented? So we could talk about the update, but if you don't staff it and you don't resource it and you don't hold people accountable, they're just going to ignore it, revise it, rezone it. And to this point, we still have seen very little action in the relocation of Producer's Dairy. Great family, but they need to get out of the neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your answers to that final question. Joe?
We will now take closing statements from each candidate, and you will have two minutes. And we will begin with Jeremy Price.
Thank you. So in closing, in running for this seat, I'm not doing it for myself. I'm doing it for the people in the district. I'm doing it for my family. I'm doing it for my children. I'm doing it for your children and your family. I've been put in this situation by God's grace, and I'm just trying to do what I can to make this a better place for everybody. I don't need the money. I do very well on my own, and I'm just wanting to make this city, the way it used to be, what I can remember when I was a kid growing up here. I want you to be happy to live here. I want you to be happy to tell your family to come visit. I want to clean this city up. I know we all want to clean it up, but I have no other intentions than moving further in a political career. I have no other intentions than to making this city a better place tomorrow than it is today. So I would appreciate your vote and consideration in the upcoming election, and thank you very much.
Annalisa Perea.
Thank you. So I have a longstanding history here in the Tower District. I have a longstanding reputation of fighting on tough issues here in the Tower District. My commitment as your next council member is to partner with the Tower District Marketing Committee to make sure that we bring a farmer's market to the Tower District, to make sure we attract more affordable housing to the Tower District, and to make sure that we bring new businesses to the Tower District. We're going to do things that the city has never done before when it comes to transitioning our homeless off the streets and into our homeless off the streets and into humane shelters. And we're going to bring back the trolley car, the trolley car that used to connect the Tower District to Fresno High School, to City College, to downtown. This is an opportunity of a lifetime, and we cannot let this council seat go to just anyone. We have too much at stake. I am proud of the record that I've ran on. This race is, this would be the honor of a lifetime for me to serve as your next council member. We are out in the street every single day talking to voters. We have anywhere from 30 to 40 people each day knocking on doors, getting our word out, and I am looking forward to, if I haven't already, to be on your doorstep and make myself available to answer any tough questions. And again, just thank you for this opportunity. I would be honored to earn your support to be your next council member for City Council, District One. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Briggs?
You know, I was born in the Tower District. I bought my first home in the Tower District, and I bought the home I live in, which is going to be my last home that I ever own, it's in the Tower District, right on the corner of Van Ness and Olive. My name's out front on the sign, out front of my business there, I live there, and I don't need a job, but I need a secure home. When I walk out my front door and there's homeless people on my porch, as if they're entitled to be there, I have to step over and step around, and I can't walk to the market that's right across the street from my house without four or five people asking me for a handout or causing some other disturbances we go. We need to turn the Tower District back to where it was. Now, I was on the council in the 90s. We did a lot. We increased the police department, we got the helicopter, we got the first-ever bike police patrols in the Tower. What happened to all that? Let's turn it back. I know the trend is to, like, younger people, I get that, new ideas, fresh faces, but sometimes we need to go back to what works. We budgeted to expand the police department, we budgeted to get the helicopter, we set priorities in the old-fashioned way, what's most important first, and we need to do that again. I want to go back to the city council, I just want to term there to bring back some of the things that really worked, that worked when I was there. I'm Mike Briggs, you can call me, you can find my web address, mikebriggsforcitycouncil.com, or come knock on my door, my name's right out on the building, I'd love to hear from you. I will, by the way, when elected, I will have an office, same office where I am now, right there in the Tower District where people could come, talk to their council member, they don't have to go downtown, go to City Hall, get a parking ticket for seeing your council member. Let's bring the city government to the Tower District, not make the Tower District go down to the City Hall. Oh, for me, Mike Briggs.
Thank you. Kerry Catalano?
Thank you very much. I've been civically involved in community affairs since I was 16, my next-door neighbor. Let's change Fresno together. I'm here today because I care about our future, I care about my neighbors, I care about what you see outside your front door and while you're driving the streets of Fresno. I'm not doing this for political gain. I lost my last election because I made tough decisions as a private resident to do whatever I could to keep Fresno moving forward. And I lost because I'm honest, I have integrity, and I'm willing to work with anybody, any party, Republican, Democrat, Green Party, independent, it does not matter. We all should have a seat at the table. I'm not looking at giving people special favors or special treatment. Everybody is equal to me. The Tower District, to the residents of Weston 99, to our residents that have seen no investment in their neighborhood along the Shields Corridor for decades, you all matter. Your sidewalks, your streets, your home, your trees, your street lighting, you need a council member that could work with anybody. I've worked with all the council members, and while they have not endorsed me, I've worked on great projects with them to make things happen in Fresno. You don't have to be endorsed by the masses to be effective. You have to be willing to be honest and transparent and to do the necessary work to move this city forward. My track record as a privately-engaged resident with no dynasty behind me has proven that I can get the results done for each and every one of you with honest and integrity. At the end of the day, I've walked and knocked on over 30,000 doors since March of 2021. I want to thank all of you for sharing your stories, your birthdays, your meals, your waters, when it's 110 and even 55 degrees. Your compassion meant the world to me, and thank you for opening your doors, your homes, and your hearts to the potential for me to be your next council member in January 2023. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have arrived at the conclusion of the District One Candidate Forum. Once again, we would like to give a special thank you to CMAC for their cosponsorship in the production of the broadcast. On behalf of the TDPA and CMAC, we would like to thank the candidates for their participation, and whoever wins the election, know that we are looking forward to working with you on issues related to the Tower District-specific plan area, as well as issues affecting the entire city of Fresno, in order to promote the best quality of life for all in our Fresno communities.
For more information on TDPA and how to get involved, including memberships and volunteering, please visit us at towerpreservation.org and on Facebook and Instagram under the Tower District Preservation Association. This production was made possible by the Community Media Access Collaborative. Learn more at cmac.tv. Thank you for joining us.